I just told her it wasn't too bad.
Good morning. Welcome to the Muscatine County Board of Supervisors meeting for Monday, July 29th, 2019. We've called a meeting to order. Our first item of business is to review the agenda.
Moved approved as presented.
Second.
Jeff is moved. Santos is second. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Item number three is to receive comments from the public. Is anybody here wishing to address a board? The board on a subject that's not already on our agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number four. Discussion and possible action to approve claims dated July 29th, 2019 in the amount of eight hundred twenty-one thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars and ninety-one cents.
Moved approved.
Jeff is moved. Doug is seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item five is discussion and possible decision regarding donating the cannon currently located on the bottom floor of the Muscatine County Courthouse to the city of Wilton to incorporate into the Muscatine County Freedom Rock Veterans Pavers Project. I see some folks are here to talk to us about that.
Yes, we were here last week to talk to you about it. I'm gonna put this picture back up on the screen. Is that okay?
Becky, would you introduce yourself to the camera?
Becky, all good. I'm from Wilton Development Corporation and I am here to talk about Muscatine County Freedom Rock. We do a lot with our partners in all throughout the county and this is going to be a salute to our veterans. And it's a Muscatine County Freedom Rock. There's one rock in each county and we asked for it. Cindy Teese is here with me. She's the president of the Legion Auxiliary in Wilton and they heard about the rock and they requested it and were lucky enough to get it. So we have the rock coming and it'll be painted next year in 2020 and there are three circles here. There's where the rock will be. These are three cement circles, rock, the star we found when we were digging up our area a couple of years back and it had been put there in nineteen twenty-two or before. So that we pulled up and that's in the center and then the third circle will have the cannon hopefully that you donate to us. And as you can see, it is just like the cannon over at the courthouse. So we're selling pavers for all our veterans now and alive and past in all our wars and doing really well. And that's, these are veterans anywhere. If folks in Muscatine County have an uncle that lives in California, they certainly can buy a paver for him because it's for all our veterans. So that's, that's the deal. Any questions?
The cannon, Becky, and I know we've had a lot, we currently have that within the courthouse. I love the idea of putting it on this project because it's not under lock and key a lot of times so people have free access. And we did have that restored a number of years ago. So my understanding is you'll plan on some type of an enclosure to...
That is correct.
You know, it's set outside for a hundred years. It'd probably be okay, but just keep some of the weather off it would be.
That is correct. We plan on doing that. We did have funds available that were already there for a military piece. So we will definitely be making an enclosure for that cannon to protect it. There'll be lighting on the spot and there'll also be security.
Well, I like, I like the idea of this and I would like the board to consider that maybe we could put about a five thousand dollar addition to that donation that to help with the movement and to build a structure, make sure that they can get a structure over this to preserve it. Sherry, would we be able to find something that we could do something out of our capital or something to help with that? Because I know this group is really working hard to, to make a nice display.
That's, that's correct. It's a hundred thousand dollar display and we're over halfway there. So.
What's the timeframe would be on moving the cannon?
On moving the cannon? We'll probably set the pieces, set the concrete this fall. We're waiting to, there's some sewer work that needs to happen down below on the street. They're waiting until after Founder's Day, which is August sixteenth, seventeenth, to get that done. And then when that's done, we will probably be starting to set the structure. And then any time after that, we get the folks that know how to move a large piece to do it for us. But we've had, we've had a lot of luck with, with that. I mean, we've had a lot of donated time from, from some great companies in our county to do it.
Do you know, does it require any special kind of pad or base for the weight of the cannon?
If it does, if you've seen the boulder, the rock.
That's probably true.
Yeah, if it does, I'm sure we'll have that base because we have a base already for the boulder and, and the star and, you know, so we will, we will definitely be checking all that out. Trust me.
If my memory serves me, we thought that was around eight hundred pounds, that cannon. I don't know if anybody from General Services recalls, but I think we had a conversation about that when we moved it, put it in the lower level of the courthouse and where we can support it and work it.
I think it's at least that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, what was the boulder? Was it a ton or two tons or something? It was, yeah. And so I don't think we have a problem. We'll, we'll be able to...
Make sure he knows that.
We won't want it to sink like the hot, like the star did and we had to pull it back up. So we wanted it back. Okay? Anything else?
Anybody else? Is there a motion?
So I'd make a motion that we donate the cannon to the Veterans Pla, whatever you call that, in Wilton and, and to include five thousand dollars to assist in the movement in direction of a structure to protect it long-term.
I'll second. Okay. Jeff is moved. Doug rather is second. Sorry. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All right. Great guys. Thank you very much.
And we will have donor recognition also. So, so just so you know, that's gonna happen.
Thank you.
Now will we get to fire it?
Yeah, sure. Sure. Right up the flower street.
Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Moving on to item number six. Items with Mike Noel from Verizon Architecture. Where do you, oh, there's. Sorry, Glenn and Mike.
I'm gonna allow Lisa to start. She's gonna give a little background on the first item on the agenda and then I will jump up and Jim, answer any questions you have on Lisa.
Hi.
Morning, Lisa.
So I'm Lisa Wurzbacher from West Liberty and I am a commissioner on the Muscatine County Historic Preservation Commission. And we are, am I supposed to stand in front of this? Okay. So we, one of the projects that we are working on is the restoration of the historic jail. And this project has been ongoing for a couple of years now, just with all the planning and making a final decision to press go. And so the first part of the project was just stabilization of the structure and that part of the project has been completed. The next, the original plans involve restoration of the jail and then a potential addition or a maintenance shed. And so since the stabilization has taken place and that part of the project has moved forward, there has been a separate maintenance facility that has been constructed. So we no longer need that to be a part of the project. And really what comes next for us is the real meat of the project, which is, you know, rehabilitating the structure and then putting it into use for the county. So what we need to do to move forward is have our, is to have a redo the schematic design because we're not gonna have that addition as part of the project anymore. So we need to have plans redrawn so that we can put together an accurate budget of, okay, here's what we're gonna do with the building. Here's what it's gonna look like now. That's not gonna be a component. And then based on how we want to potentially use it, you know, here's what we need to do moving forward. So redo that part of the project and the redesign is, we've spoken with Mike. We asked him to give us a proposal which you have in front of you and his, we asked him for a proposal on two items. Number one, to just do this first part, the schematic, the schematic redesign. And then also moving forward, a proposal to manage the project for us, you know, so helping with blueprints, bid process, project management, construction management. And so today what we're looking forward, looking for is approval to just move forward with that first portion, which is about five thousand dollars. And our commission has been fundraising in order to pay for that. And we have enough money to press go and move forward with the first part. We actually, we have established a Friends Group to support the project. So there's a Friends of the Jail group that will be focused on financing and funding. And we've had a couple of meetings. We have written a fundraising plan that was voted on and approved so that we could press go on that. And so that's getting kicked off, but we do already have some funding that we could at least get this portion done because this also will give us a project that we can sell. So it's a lot easier to ask for money if we have, you know, a detailed story to tell and some renderings that we can show the public. So it'll just help answer a lot of questions for us frankly and for donors. So what do you, what else do you wanna say? Anything? Mike, can you answer any questions that you have about what all's involved in that five thousand dollars spend, but anything you wanna add?
Yeah. So I think Lisa hit it pretty well there. So the initial study, as you recall back, was done by Doug Steinmetz looking at a potential addition and then a reuse of the building in phases. As we did the first round of the renovation and essentially the stabilization work, we did most of the things that were in phase one with that. But as you said, with the addition now of the maintenance garage, it's gonna make more sense to relook at that and try to more effectively use the entire building. So we talked about it's essentially getting through phase one. We need to develop a budget. We need to develop marketing materials and understanding that this is something that will be a phase over time. So we would expect this to be the initial design services. Once we have an idea of what the building's gonna cost and then what we need to do to fully develop the plans, we'll come back with a phase two for design and construction administration. But the goal here is really to continue to work to see this project and this whole block we're working with kind of fruition. So be very flexible as much as we can, more or less to help Lisa with what she needs at this point to get the budgets, to get the marketing materials together and to help progress this project down the road.
I basically told Mike he has to give me as much as he possibly can for as little money as possible. So.
That's what we tell him.
So that's, so that's where we're at in a nutshell.
Okay.
From a customer perspective.
What, what questions do you have for me as, you know, for the commission or for Mike as the specialist?
I'll think of, just the only thing I was looking at was just when do you think you'd get it completed by? When would we know your information from your survey?
Like if we press go, when would you have the first unit presented?
So as far as the survey, the building, I'm very familiar with the building. I had the initial modeling done from when we did the phase one rehabilitation. So I would guess probably within about four to six weeks, we'll sit down and kind of run through, revisit the project, revisit the program, kind of some of the schematic floor plans. I would think that would be a reasonable timeframe. But if we move to the end of September, Lisa would have some good numbers to work with. So we can at least have an idea of what the fundraising goal is and then we can make a decision on how we best market that.
How much have you guys have been able to raise thus far?
So far, we've raised, I think we're at like twenty-three hundred dollars. But we just finalized our fundraising campaign two weeks ago, maybe, or about a month ago, right?
Yes.
Not been, right? So there was a lull in the project. You know, the first phase of it, the stabilization took place and then things were really paused for a while because I think the Friends Group and, you know, they were kind of struggling with how to move forward. And so, because, you know, really you need money to do anything. And so a couple of us just joined the Friends Group in June. So we're newbies. So, but the first thing is you have to have a fundraising plan. So once, once we wrote that and it was presented and adopted, actually, we've already kicked off the first part of it, which is a letter writing campaign. And so it's a well-developed strategy that has, you know, a long-term goal and shows how we feed into meeting that overall goal. So, so we have, we have enough now to get the ball rolling. But really, in order to really do the meetings that we need to do and the events we, events we need to do, we have to have something to show people. So this gets us started and then I think it'll really take off from there.
Okay. I'll move to approve.
Second. Santos is moved to approve. Jeff is second. Is any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Lisa, for being here for the fun part of the presentation. Now we can jump into the organization. Shall we dig in? Three items to discuss with you today. The first two are regarding the courthouse project and then we'll jump into, all right, the third change order, which I have some background to discuss with you as we get into that. So the first change order you're seeing here is for the courthouse project. We have, all the plaster is complete, as you know. The painting is complete. General contractor is back in, starting to frame up the benches in the jury room and is really looking at the final last minute details of things we need to wrap up. As part of the initial design, the goal was to reuse as much as possible of the jury room finishes. Since we were getting in there to do the bathroom and kitchenette, carpet had been replaced a couple of years back. So what we're hoping is that we would be able to reuse a good portion of that. What we found is kind of going through, looking at the last details is with the demolition of that existing, those two bathrooms that were in there and the correction of the new bathroom is just there's some trim, there's some different pieces of molding that didn't quite match up. The paint in the room, just looking at it, it just needs to really be redone all the way around. And looking at that carpet and thinking about how the extension from the courtroom, which will have all new carpet into that room, there was a portion of the flooring that wasn't gonna quite match up and we're going down from a carpet tile to a broadloom carpet. So by and large, when we look through, walk through, Sherry walked through the general contractor, what we'd like to do is basically extend that entire carpet into the jury room, have that be one continuous look all the way throughout. The paint and things on the walls, those are things that, as we talk about, kind of contingency getting into a project. We try and predict as much as we can upfront. We do hold a little bit in our pocket just for these little wrap-up details. So essentially what we're looking at is we have, have done pretty well, even though I know I've been back several times, we're still doing pretty well on our contingency overall. So this would be like that kind of icing on the cake to take that entire jury room and really bring that up to date with the rest. So what you're seeing here is essentially we're going to extend the carpeting into that room, repaint the room and then we'll contract and mark up there. So a total of seven thousand three hundred dollars, essentially to bring the jury room up to the same level and standard of finish that we'll have with the rest of the courtroom.
Hey, I, you know, none of us like change orders, but I haven't, I don't know if anybody's walked into the area. The courtroom itself is just starting to look really nice. I walked into the green and brown jury room and said, this place doesn't even fit. You know, I would hate to have us spend the kind of money we have on the courtroom and then save a nickel in the end and then wind up with a jury room that doesn't look like it belongs. So, you know, I think, you know, it's, makes, makes good sense to continuing the flooring through and doing that.
So Mike, can you tell me, how much does this flooring of the fifty-seven hundred, does that cover? Is that the courtroom and the jury room? How much square footage are we talking for fifty-seven hundred?
That's just the upgrade for the jury room. So I think it's around four hundred square feet or so. What we expect is we have a very good quality carpet tile. So we've run into this with a few of our flooring folks where they come in with a typical commercial carpet tile. I actually pulled this straight from the courtroom, GSA, through the Department of General Services Administration. Their spec for a very high-quality, long-life, heavy traffic area, which you can inspect in the technical details. But basically it's about twice as heavy and with the construction as a typical carpet tile, which you're seeing in most commercial spaces. So it is definitely a, it is a, I would say it's a better investment upfront. So over time, what you see is it's going to wear much better in the long term. Additionally, with the opening up in the courtroom with all the hard surfaces we have now, without the acoustic, this will have basically air noise absorption into that space. So if you went out and just looked at, hey, what am I paying for carpet? You're paying more for this for square foot, but it's just because of the, the use of the space that it's gonna be in.
So then, that's great if that's what it is. Is it similar than what we have in our courtroom? So we're gonna have compatible materials?
It's gonna be the exact same carpet. We'll extend that same material that we have in the courtroom and go into the jury room. Yes.
Okay.
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
Santos is moved. Jeff is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
All right. Okay. So the second item on the agenda here is for the, basically the gallery benches. And this, this is not a change order per se. So as part of the contract, as we've broken up, we had the general contractor construction. We had the service for the paint. We had the service for the historic plaster restoration. And then furniture and fixtures, basically FFNE, we had as a separate contract as well. So what we did wanna do was have the general contractor play the paint markup on furniture that we were getting. So we have the tables, chairs, all of those things for the courtroom. We were able to spec this kind of straight from down the street here. What we wanted to do and weren't sure what we'd be able to do was the benches that were in there. The original plan was to try and take those benches out, see if we could repair, refinish, maybe adapt them. As we took those benches out and we started to do the demolition, it became pretty clear that just the, the type of construction wasn't gonna be compatible with redoing that. So this is something that it's just kind of been on my to-do list is figure out what are we gonna do for the benches? And now as we're getting close to the end, kind of loop back around to it. What we decided was that we just wanna get something very simple. We're not gonna come back with a cushion, but we just want a good quality wood benches to put back in. So what we're gonna have back in the gallery space, you see as the courtroom comes back together, that gallery rail will be reinstalled. And what we'll have is two rows of more or less, think of them as like pews, but maybe not quite that level. But just very simple, straightforward, finished-in-wood benches. So we'll have a total of ten of those at eight foot long. What that will leave is gonna, there'll be four rows to the back and then there'll be two up front by the gallery rail, which will then leave two spaces in the center that will be totally wheelchair accessible. So we have is again the, the cost here for the actual fabrication of those and these will be custom designed and manufactured by a very good, high-quality local wood shop. Delivery and installation of those. We'll have plates to get those anchored back down to the floor. So essentially get those put in, put in place. The material, the finish, everything are gonna exactly match what we have in the courtroom right now with the new woodwork. I mean, you may recall that we had, you know, fifty tones of brown previously. Everything is coming back together to be the same look and feel here. So I did reach out to a couple of other options to see what the cost was and this is a very fair cost. So my recommendation would be to recommend or to approve the fabrication of the benches so we can get these in, in there and ready to go for the project.
And since I see my company did those, I will refuse myself from this.
I don't know much.
I have a few questions first.
Yep.
The, the thickness of this plywood, is it similar to what we have in place?
It will be, I'm assuming at least three-quarter inch plywood for the, actually I see that we have one and a half inch, so it's two layers. Yeah. So it's actually, I think the original, the benches that were in there when we started taking them apart were veneered pressed wood. So that was, they were trying to take them out of the courtroom. They were essentially falling apart.
And I believe if I looked at some of the design details that you've got, inch and a quarter. Decking in the backs are all solid wood, inch and a quarter or inch and somewhere in there on the, on the seat.
Yeah.
To support the kind of loads that would be required on something that size.
Will this replace all of them?
That's correct.
Six of four or?
No, there will be, no, none of the original benches, we've either their size or the, as I said, they just kind of fell apart when we took them out. So there will be, this will be all brand-new gallery seating for the courtroom.
And the labor is installed by the same company?
Well, they, they are not going to do the direct installation, but it will be under the same contract. So they've subcontracted out. Essentially the general contractor will be doing the work, but it's all under Jeff's review.
Okay.
And I think that, you know, it's, if you look at the labor on the installation, you say that's a pretty good amount of labor. But part of that is fabricating fasteners for the floor. Because one of the things that, if you bend up to that area of the floor, there are wood sub-supports in the floor, but they're really not in the right place to fasten decks. So this would be taking some plate steel brackets to attach properly to the bottom of the, of the benches and then, then those will be attached to the floor and epoxy then. And so a good, solid construction that hopefully our maintenance staff never has to deal with.
Yeah, it's a great point. So there is fabrication of the custom.
Yeah, well, I didn't know, obviously when you say material and stuff, it doesn't explain those things. So that's what I question the cost, but.
Mike, just because this is just company, I just wanna make sure. You said you talked to some other fabricators around here?
I did. Yep. I received two other, two other quotes, which were in pretty much in the same range as these. Just from a lead time standpoint, my concern, one was in Wisconsin and they were, so they could kind of push us in, but they were pushing way towards the end of September. I had another shop that wasn't sure if they would be able to deliver by the end of August. So again, talking to a schedule standpoint, pushing up against what the state court's schedule is, it seemed to be the best option to ensure that we'd have the material in place by the open date.
The only other thought I had on it, and I don't know if you reached out to them at all and I don't even know how to, but I'm guessing the original stuff, a lot of the stuff in the court systems comes from prison industries and I don't know if they have options that they do commonly. I'm guessing what was there was probably prison industry stuff. I'm guessing what was there was probably prison industry stuff, it was pretty low-quality.
Yeah, it's.
Or poorly built stuff.
Mm-hmm.
That might be where you could save some money.
From a quality standpoint, and more or less as the match, I think we could certainly look for another option there, and that was one of my other concerns. If we go elsewhere, at least we have, we know one shop, one set of materials, one set of stains, it's going to be consistent throughout versus trying to match something with a third-party.
Yeah, I'm just trying to satisfy everybody that we're going with this because it's the best deal in, in the timeframe that we have and not just because it's Jeff.
Absolutely.
What was the timeframe on it, just to be clear on that for me?
So, our, our current wrap-up date is for the end of August, so we're hoping to be, have all work done by, just prior to Labor Day weekend, to have one week, essentially for any sort of punchless items. These state courts have asked us to be ready to go by September 6th, which they have a trial starting, so that's our, our, no kidding, don't tell the G C, they have until August 25th. No, but they, that's essentially what we're working for right now, so we feel like we're very well on track to have that done.
And this quote, I guess, I guess I didn't real review where it says that they could deliver it in 30 days?
Yeah, I know a guy. That was your, it doesn't have any guarantee on there, but that was part of our conversation, so.
Okay, all right. I think, I don't know, I guess my only thing would be is probably to document that, that we do have that over.
Okay.
That way we can come back in and identify what the, what the needs were to be met if we ever had any questions on why we did what we did, so we can just have that updated estimate, verify that it can be delivered in four weeks.
Absolutely, and maybe if you signed the estimate, they would just put in, you know, an interesting statement to be delivered by.
Like, that way we can verify.
Like that, okay.
I move to approve.
Second, yeah. So, I think it actually dug you the first.
Um, sorry.
It's all Santos, it's all right, Santos, we'll call yours a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Those opposed, those abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
Thank you, appreciate it, and would you make sure that the minutes reflect to the satisfaction of anyone in the process that we went through in terms of arriving at a vendor? Thank you. All right, Mike, moving on.
Okay, so, the last item on your agenda is for a change order for design services for the new maintenance and search and rescue facility. I'm going to start out with a little bit of background on this. Essentially, we were at 90, 95% design on the project and had everything ready to submit for site planner view with the city of Musketeen. We had, as part of the rezoning request for the project indicated the rough location of the building, so if you can see on the screen, I don't know if you want to share this, but this is the, this is the site as it is right now, so the, you see the parking spaces on the northwest corner. We had originally indicated, and I don't know if I'll be able to, see if I can do a little highlight here, on a rezoning request and in conversations with the city, we had discussed putting the building approximately in this location, which you'll see is not too far off, and we'll have when we get to the next slide. Currently, this row of parking is used by the city, and that's basically a, an agreement that is a verbal agreement back to 96, which was as a part of the city giving a portion of land in order to expand the jail. So the city's been using that, you know, kind of by, we'll call tradition. So what we're trying to do is find a win-win situation for everybody to work with here. So what we had done was push the building off to the side, and you can see on the next slide here, and I bumped back to this one. This was the original arrangement that we had submitted to the city's part of site planner view. Our rationale on this, as we discussed through, was that Fifth Street is the primary traffic way, so we were going to enter and egress, so you can see that our garages were pushed back. Some of the space here was generated by the necessity and turn radius to be able to take the larger vehicles and trailers that search and rescue and county maintenance have, and that's kind of where we ended up with our location here for the building. You can see we still are preserving around those 20 spaces we originally had, which was our intent, that we would still allow the city to use as parking spaces. When we went to designer view, basically our site planner view for our initial push, we got pushed back from the city that they didn't really like the fact that the building had gotten pushed so far back from the street, even though we originally showed that's how we're going to do our access on there. So what they offered was to say, well, if you would flip the building and bring the, put the garages to the back, what they will do is, our, our big concern was that we didn't want to go to Walnut because of the two-sided parking there. If anybody's tried to drive down that street, you know that there's not really room for one vehicle to get by if this vehicle's parked there. What the city offered was that they would make Walnut Street parking on one side only to allow ingress or our vehicles to go through there, which would allow then essentially off the alley here, we could use Walnut Street as our primary ingress and egress. We didn't have a major problem with that, it did generate some additional work on our part, but as we started to look at the options, the big issue we have on the site right now, as you can see here, is there's a transformer, a pole, and apparently a communications pedestal with MPW. When we just flipped the building to the other side, what we ran into was this parking and turn space that we needed, or turn space by the garages, we didn't have sufficient clearance around the transformer. We reached out to MPW to see what the cost of potentially relocating that transformer would be, and it was going to probably jump up into the six-figure range to refeed the historic jail, to move the transformer, to move the communications, decided that was probably not necessarily the best option. So, what we kind of ran into was a, a part, then our other option then to the city is that we offered, said, well, what if we flip-flop, bring the building over to anchor the corner here, if you will, you can kind of see my chicken scratch, and then we would move the parking to this side. In conversations with the fire marshal and the chief of police for the city, they felt that that was getting the parking lot a little too distant for their operations, so what the city offered back was something very similar to this scheme, which actually I took what they offered and then improved it a little bit. So, what they offered or suggested was that we do straight-in parking along Walnut Street, similar to what they have a couple of blocks over by the Come and Go, and then still have the same site circulation, so our garages would be here towards the back, as you can see, with, with access onto and off of Walnut Street. What the city would offer to do with that is that, that would go, you see, it beats a little bit into where the, the property line, but if we would then give them that as the right of way, and the city would take over ownership of that space and also take over the maintenance, and then they would have their parking spaces, so then the county would no longer have any, either implied or actual obligation to the city to provide parking spaces on the block, we would have access to everything else through there. Kind of sketched together, you can see that those 20 parking spaces come to about right here. So I really, two things to ask today. One is, is this an acceptable solution, and two, we'll talk about why that generated the changes on the part of the engineers here. So essentially, our ask right now, going back and forth, we determined that, and you can see the transformer is now over here, so we're staying well clear of that. Moving the transformer did not seem to be a very good option, definitely from a cost standpoint. Doing this arrangement versus repaving, ran through the cost, it's actually going to save about 50% on the overall parking lot cost, because we're taking a 24-foot center aisle from a parking, surface parking that would be located on our lot. It also allows us to push the building over to better anchor the corner from an urban planning standpoint, and it also gets the building 100% completely away from the geothermal field. So a lot of positives to this, and it also allows us to more or less continue to be a good neighbor with the city here, allow, you know, give them the parking that they now can own and maintain, give up the responsibility for that. So that's kind of where we are, where we're heading. You can see there is a significant change from what we had originally posed here, which is more or less the completed engineering solution.
Mike, can you go back to the other slide a little bit? Not that one, the green, the second. I mean, I kind of like, I think, the aesthetic of this, I like, it looks like it'd be nice in that area. I have a couple of concerns. One is, where is the parking? Is the historic jail group continues? Have you anticipated parking for that? Is that what those spaces kind of off that wall are?
Exactly, so right now, if you go back there, there's some kind of gravel and it's some grass and some, some full-on parking spaces. This is the opportunity, whether we do this as part of this project or that becomes part of the historic jail project, there's parking space available there. We would also be adding these spaces down here towards the end, which would be in addition to the 20 that has been by, you know, by agreement gone to the city. So what we're doing in essence is adding, or at least creating the opportunity to add parking for that when it becomes, you know, not a maintenance facility, but more of a museum facility.
And are we stopping the egress from our current parking lot to Walnut, or is that, are we going, are you just showing that greened out, or are we going to block people off? Because a lot, you know, we, the current parking lot there on the corner, you can exit over by the public safety building as well, are we going to not, not do that, or?
That would be my strong recommendation. I don't think we're going to do it as part of this project, but particularly since we have, what we want to do is kind of make this a little bit nicer public space, whether we do any actual improvements on it or not, or just kind of think about how that space comes together. We would love to see some sort of pedestrian path come through there at some point in the future and connect this all the way through. My concern would be is if we have the county maintenance, we have the search and rescue back there, potential for a lot of larger vehicles, more traffic. There are two street exits off of the apartment lot for the courthouse right now, which go to Fourth, which I think are well-sufficient. I don't know that we need this access any longer once we have maintenance, is not using that building. Right now, I would say that it's the most convenient for them to get in and out of the lot.
And then, so, I don't know the size of that, I'm trying to remember the size of vehicles we're putting in that shed and that corner in there, I mean, have we looked at that? Do we think that that's going to be challenges? How wide is that apron or that roadway?
You mean this or this?
I'm just worried about their access into that area.
Two parking spots wide.
But, but actually pulling the parking, with those drive-in spaces, what do, what have, does that start at current curb, or does it?
It looks like.
So would that widen that street as well then?
I took my best guess, so it's about a 32-foot right-of-way from, from curb to curb right now for the city, and I pushed those back about 20 feet. The minimum parking depth is 18 feet by, or the parking space, 18 feet by nine and a half. Again, this would be concept, I still need, this is where, I just need to go back to engineers to get the absolute. What I want to do is get enough direction for them that we can, again, minimize the amount of rework they have to do, but give them enough, and as we've kind of worked, tried to work back and forth as much as we could with sketches and this portion, just say, what about this, what about this? What we will need to do is to make this reality, so I'm using my best, you know, interpretation of the codes, but they would be the ones to look at that, make everything work together with Grace as well.
Well, another question is, the green space beside the, where we demoed the old sheriff's quarters, I think we left a structure underneath there, down six, eight feet or whatever. We talked at some point about the potential for, if, if we would need or expansion of our geothermal fields, or is that still viable over there? Is that not viable? Did we learn? Because it sounds like maybe with some of our, you know, do we need to consider expanding our geofields?
The foundation is still there, but, I mean, as far as drilling geothermal wells, they can drill through that foundation if that's what we chose to do. We don't know what's underneath that. What we ran into in some other spaces is, like the area where the geofield is now, there were houses there that were knocked down and pushed into the, into the basement, and there's a lot, there's a lot of junk in the downtown area underground, so we have to test it, let it see, but I don't, I don't believe the foundation could be something that could affect.
Because I mean, I, I just, I think last week when I was at Farrar, maybe we had some issues with our geofield, was maybe, maybe we are at the point where we need to contemplate expanding the size of our geofield, is that a fair statement? Okay, so that would be our, this still leaves us an area where we could do that with some potential.
Okay, with the current geofield, I'm sorry to turn it up, you can see where their layout, approximately where the wells are located, they, the wells in the lateral, the horizontal lines were located, at least six feet below grade, so we could, if we wanted to, put the building over top of the geofield, so that wouldn't preclude us from using in the future. You can see the approximate distance from the property line into where that parking would go is only two or three feet, so I don't think we're losing all that much necessarily to make that not an option for the future.
Oh, and I like the green space, I mean, I like even the idea where that geofield is, is doing something with that green space. If we do a facility over there, maybe we should consider some kind of like a sprinkler system or landscape system so that staff can maintain that and we can dress that up a little, because, you know, there's a lot of investment happened in this segment in Musketeen, it's looking a lot better than it did 30 years ago when I came here, and I don't want the county to be the kind of the, look like the orphan on the street, so.
What do the folks who are going to be using the building the most say about the proposed change?
So we've discussed this through with Oscar, and, I mean, at this point, it doesn't seem to have any concerns, Oscar, I think it, it seems to work pretty well. There are reasons, again, the reason that we initially didn't propose this was just with the traffic flow with Fifth and Walnut, so when they offered the, the Walnut to make the changes off of that, I think it was a good move, I wish we had had that, or they would have offered that earlier in the process when we're doing the rezoning, we would have been able to eliminate the need for rework.
So Mike, this, give me this service order you're talking about, is to kind of flush this design out, go to engineering on it, because my concern is, is, I don't know, Brian, what's the, that search and rescue boat that we're currently working on? How long a boat is that?
Top of the head, I can't tell you. The concern that I would have is if they're pulling out of that, essentially that alley, traditionally Walnut Street has parking on both sides and that is pretty tight.
Yeah, that, that'd be, you know, as a person that pulls long trailers, you know, if you've got a 20-foot boat behind a heavy-duty truck and you try to make that turn there, I am concerned about the turn radiuses and even backing them in and getting them in the facilities decent. It was a concern on Fifth Street as well, so.
So I, I do know that this, the width of this ramp here in front was sized with that in mind to get, basically be able to pull in to turn around completely and then back in, so that, that space is okay.
That, that big apron out there?
Correct. The ingress and egress, again, with, we have straight-in parking here, we're eliminating parking from one side, absolutely, and I think if it's a, continue to be a concern, we can do is have them placard to do no parking to a certain distance of the intersection. I think that would be a reasonable request, particularly if we're going to give that back. If you look at the total parking capacity now that we've added along Walnut, it's definitely going to be increased from the parallel parking spaces that are there. So part of this would be, if we, if we do this, obviously we have to have the engineers verify turn radiuses, things along that line, but being a 32-foot wide right-of-way, I, I don't, I don't have as, as much concern about that, I think that's a survival issue, but I think we could certainly push back to the city, say, hey, we're definitely willing to do this, we think it's a great idea, however, we'd like a little bit of help to make sure that we are preserving our ability to get in and out of our site.
I wonder if it would make sense just for that one block between Fifth and Fourth to make Walnut a one-way, southbound? That way we don't have the, because I think you're going to get a lot more traffic going Walnut onto Fifth than you're going to get Fifth coming onto Walnut.
Mm-hmm.
And that, you know, minimizes the, or at least reduces the challenges of navigating not only the parking, but the traffic there as you try and maneuver large vehicles. It's not super-heavy use right now in my experience, but, and that would also require us to, if we're going to get out of the Mulberry or Fifth, we have to go down to Fourth, and then we could access Mulberry, I believe there's a stop, well, no, there's not a stop sign there, is there? It's not a, it's not a four-way.
At this corner?
Well, hey, I'm just teasing out loud. The other question I have, so, I mean, basically the reason that this is necessary is because of primarily accommodating the arrangement, I don't know if you would call it, the arrangement of the city for, or parking, what's the city willing to chip in with this?
I don't know if it's just parking, Nathan, I think it's also maybe has to do with the street appeal, because we were coming in off the street and kind of going into the center of the lot, which would change the look in the area, I think, a little bit too.
Okay, I'll still ask the same question.
I can ask that question, I think that what you would get out of it for sure would be is, if we do the parking, we're going to redo it somewhere anyway, so if we do this, it's going to be a less costly, it's about 50% of the space, so we'll be about half the cost.
They don't have to chip in as much.
And then, and, you know, push this back, but then they'll also take over the ownership of it, so you no longer have the maintenance of it. So currently, we're, the county is responsible for parking on the parking lot and taking responsible for parking on the parking lot and taking care of that portion. So once this goes, goes in the city right-of-way, you no longer have that recurring cost. I could certainly ask the question, are we definitely willing to do this?
My big question is when they're down to twenty, actually only using twenty spaces, what are they going to do with all their job trailers and all their extra stuff that's sitting there all the time?
No, I think they're aware of that. But I think they'll need to understand that once this happens, is that we are, there's not going to be just a, an asphalt surface out there, just kind of free for fair game. What we want to do is get the site cleaned up, get it organized.
And so we'll tear, we'll, as a part of this, we'll demo all that stuff and clean that all up and.
I think that's a fair question to push back, particularly as there is some question on the, let's say, the hard-minded legality of that agreement between the city and the county. So we are accommodating, there's the concern of the, basically the organizer principle of the urban structure in that C2 zoning district to kind of have buildings closer to the lot lines, which we are taking care of with this. There was some concern from a resident about traffic and parking along Fifth Street, so we've definitely addressed that with them. We are giving them a better, what I think is a better overall organization for where they want their parking to be. So I don't think it would be unfair to ask potentially if the city would throw in, since we're having to relocate what we have as perfectly good sidewalk right there, potentially they could throw in on sidewalk or curb and gutter, find some way to make this a win-win situation.
Yeah, I think it's a joint benefit, it should be a joint project.
Absolutely.
I got a few questions. So, the whole Walnut design that you're talking about right here, going all the way out, all of that parking spaces is basically coming right off Walnut, right onto those parking spaces, or are we still going to have sidewalks in between there?
The parking space will be directly off the street, which you can see is, I apologize for the graphic here, but you can see the sidewalk, this will be the relocation of the sidewalk. So we would push that sidewalk back, and essentially you'd have parking stops, and then the sidewalk would start there. So we would come back into the sidewalk.
So then everything that's metered parking on the other side is going to be gone as well too then?
Are you referring to this side of the street?
The west side?
Basically the, no, the other side.
This side, yes. So that, that parking will go there.
So that metered parking on the other side is going to be gone?
Yeah.
I do note that that's metered parking.
Front of the, the, front of the.
Both sides of the street.
In front of the actual, no, but I don't know.
Between Third and Fourth is metered.
Between Third and Fourth it is, that's what I'm saying. So down further, it is right in front of, right here, right in front of the.
Yes.
The jail.
None of that is metered.
But I'm saying, over down below, right down below, all of that is metered.
Once it gets to the courthouse lawn, it does.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So basically, we're going to remove all of that metered parking and parallel parking.
No.
The courthouse is on that block.
That, that whole.
The courthouse is in the block below the.
We're down.
And that's where it's metered.
The courthouse sits here.
Okay.
So this is the old, this is the old.
Nothing on this side has metered.
Not today.
Okay, so then, my, my other question then is, where you have the circle right now, why, why can't we put it right there? Why can't we put this whole building instead of tearing out all of that concrete that we have existing for parking? And why can't we put the new, you already talked about where the geothermal is at right now?
Well, I can see from a space standpoint, we don't have enough room to fit the building onto that corner, and we would be, basically, you can see with the overall width of that.
Well, what I'm saying is, forget the space for the, for the, let's say we don't give them the parking spaces. What I'm saying is then if we would put it there, then we wouldn't never have to tear apart the existing parking up on the top.
I understand your question. I, there's not room on that piece of the lot. We did initially discuss that. But to get the sort of width of the building, if we need to make that work, we wouldn't be able to get the parking area and everything else we needed in that.
Yeah, you think you could flip the building ninety degrees.
That's what I'm getting at, because then I would have to tear out all the existing parking spaces that are across the road, because that, that parking lot's probably going to cost us a million bucks just to redo. You run into that much, that much concrete, that much park, may have, no, outside of Well, it looks like it's, it's in there now, you know.
So in the current parking lot that's out there is asphaltic, it's kind of falling apart, and it's, it's.
It's half asphalt, half concrete.
Would be taken out of the way.
This was about fifty thousand. Yeah, what do we, what did our last parking lot? Well, the biggest, the last one we did was up at the public, or the post office, the old post office, that was about a hundred thousand, a hundred and twenty thousand.
More than that, with all seven done, because we didn't have able to.
Permeable pavers.
So the whole project was under.
Under two hundred. But you're probably, probably a couple hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of parking lot there.
Will there be requirement for portion of this to be semi-permeable if they require it up there?
At this point, they haven't said that we would. So they did say specifically that they wouldn't require permeable pavers for the street parking.
They would or would not?
Would not, for the street. And from a site plan perspective, I would push back hard if they wanted to make us do anything more with stormwater, because we're not creating any more impervious surface, and actually we're going to be doing a much better job of managing the stormwater from the building, so.
Okay, so then my last question, not to cut you off, but here, everything that you got lying right there on the left, that is the parking that we're going to, according to our agreement, potentially still let the city have.
So everything, everything that's unhatched here. So this, this run is thirteen spaces. And again, this is, this is my preliminary dropping things on, this is probably subject to one or two spaces different. This is what potentially could go there, but you can see then to the hatched area there, that goes another seven spaces. So this towards the end is potential parking that we could add, or at least an option to extend that for the future if we wanted to do that to service the museum space.
All right, so then the parking that you see above.
These, these parking?
No, the next one up above, right there. Those six spots right there, is that, is that our parking then for the county?
Yes, that would be parking, basically. So we do have, we have garage space, but the county also has general services, two or three sedans plus employee parking, so.
Is that sufficient?
I think that, I think with, between that and then using the other spaces, we have at least as much parking space we have out there right now.
So those bottom ones would be ours as well?
Those would be yours. If you choose to do those at this point, what I want to do is again, show what are the potential for a private, best organization. So absolutely. The only spaces that would be part of the twenty in the agreement to the city would be the ones that are hatched here, and my proposal would be to get them as close as you could, or get them to the edge of your property. So once they go to the city, it's not, you don't have to get onto the property, that's basically the county lots anymore. So then we have basically the freedom to do what we want to with our space in the
Anybody else have any questions?
So staff's good with this? You're good with this? Eric? You're good with it?
First time I've seen it, never been asked to.
You're good with it?
What's the apron on the backside of the garage? Is that a secondary exit or something, or is there?
So we have one full-through bay for the general services, so that's their full-through bay.
And the roll-up doors are right here to the south?
Yes, so the roll-up door is now open towards the center of the site, which again, from an overall composition and urban standpoint, it's nicer to have a garage towards the back of the house versus the front.
Michael, there will be a development to add this, for the street. As you remember, if there was any plan to expand or more parking, is that we have that PO line really shallow to the ground. So they can be north, but then the more they pass down and forth and Walnut.
Oh, right here for the retaining wall, yeah.
Just to consider that, it's coming up as you go into the jail, so really you can touch.
It would be something we would need to be modified, yeah. So that's, again, we look at, what's the overall site. So with the idea that we need at least twenty parking spaces along Walnut, what I want to do here is just present a, might kind of broader-scale concept. Whether we take it back for the, you know, the layout with the engineers is, they will make the recommendations on the best. And then also, we can do a little value engineering on this, whether we want to do all this parking right now, or whether it was something that we save for, maybe to roll that into the, to the museum project, if that's going to be something servicing that building. That's more of a.
You could get in there and excavate, you do it at once and get it all the way you want it.
That'd be my thought.
Be the lowest-cost way to do it. So we don't currently like that, you show that arcing path, the back of that parking lot, if I remember right, we don't really have a defined path or anything there, do we?
There's nothing there right now. Essentially, it goes straight. Don't even think there's a curb, it just goes asphalt to grass.
Because I know, you know, it seems frequently contractors, I don't know whose they are, feel like that's a great, just a great place to set and park their junk.
City contractors.
City contractors, yeah, I know, generally speaking, have been. They kind of use it as they wish, it seems.
What we hear when we approach them is that they thought that belonged to the city so they could park on the grass.
Yeah, I'd like to clean all that up to make sure it's, it's not a big deal. I mean, if they talk to general services staff, I don't have a problem with us being accommodating to people, but I just don't, I don't like just junk sitting around looking like, it just looks trashy. Half the time when I drive by there, because you get old junky trucks and trailers hanging out there, and makes it hard for people to get around the corner in our parking lot. And I'm sure it causes problems with snow removal and everything else. It's, you know, it's not a place you can just sit out your ground.
Anyone else?
When you get time, I want to verify what the distances that we needed to have for the width, and why, what the distance is in that green space that we have across from the historic. Like, is it, are we short twenty feet? Are we short, short a hundred feet?
In respect to relocated.
Yeah, because I'd rather see that there.
The building's, well, you got drive-through space, right?
Yeah, but I mean, if you can see.
One hundred-foot building.
You're doing the drive-through from over, if you flipped it the other way, like we had it originally on the other side.
We're talking about swinging it down here by the old jail.
Yep.
And rotating it ninety degrees.
Correct.
Okay, this is not the scale, but you can get it as a, just as a, what if, so if we went from here to the property line, you can see the building is currently fifty-eight feet wide, and down in the corner, as we went to property line, which is as far as you could build, because it would have zero setback. If we went all the way to the edge of the jail, which we really need to keep about ten feet off of that, I would say we really only have maybe thirty-two feet buildable there without running into fire protection issues. And then for the other direction, that's thirty-seven feet. So even if we did that, we were tight, we would have essentially the face of that building. Give me a second here, I'll tell you something for scale. You can see that's roughly what that building would look like on that spot with the rectangle highlighted there, even if we rotated it, and we just would not, then we definitely would not have enough clearance to be able to back and turn vehicles. We'd have no ability to pull through that space. So I think it's a good question, it's something that we have studied. Just, it didn't seem to be the best use. And in addition, what we'd like to do is to have that space with, when we started to talk with Lisa and Historic Preservation Commission, of what can we do to kind of integrate that as an indoor/outdoor space as well. I feel like taking all that green space and parking in the building next to it would limit a lot of the opportunities for the future to make that a good civic area.
Well, and something in the back of my head is hurting about, we had some kind of an issue with something feeding the jail that runs right across there.
That's what I was talking about, yeah.
The depth is not where.
Exactly, so you go down there and mold in a wrap or something, you got to excavate with that, and then we're going to be felting almost the back of it.
Yeah, so we've got.
Where it comes out of the historic jail, it's fairly shallow, then it deepens. So we should be okay when we get to the parking spaces bit, but.
And that's the geo stuff?
Is it the geo or is it fiber?
It's geo.
Yeah, I think.
Don't we have, don't we have current line locates and all that stuff? So that should be something that you would have probably prior to pouring footings and stuff.
We, we have good maps and everything's been.
We just know it's shallow and have to.
Okay.
They just brought it out for a shallow out of that building.
And all of the, so these, all these dots and circles that you see on here, the, each one of the wells has a geo locate on it, and so the surveyors were able to locate the exact location of those wells. So those are plotted appropriately. Of note, there's also wells underneath this portion of the parking lot that is not affecting this project, but just so you know, this whole half of the block, essentially the whole east half of the block is geo well right now. So having parking on top of the geothermal is not an That being said, I'd prefer not to excavate into it if we don't have to, because six feet on plan may not equate to six feet in reality.
Well, I think, sure, but, you know, we just really don't want to dig a lot in that whole area, because there's years and years of just pushing things in and burying them. We ran into that on the parking lot, we ran into everything we've gotten into, we ran
All right, so the ask today is?
So the ask today, one would be, I would like a, I don't necessarily need a formal approval, but kind of agreement principles, if this is a direction that is okay with the county to go, so we can go back and essentially redo the site plan review and get that in process with the city for site plan review.
Is everyone all right with that? Does anyone have any issues?
I, I'd like to follow up a little bit on that parking spaces and what we give or what we let them, you know, borrow, whatever, because if we're going to be implementing all this new cost for them to have and utilize that, I think they need to be helping out as well as what you had mentioned, Nathan, in regards to costs. And then maybe we look at either, you know, giving it to them, and then maybe we identify what is ours and what is theirs, this whole thing from nineteen ninety-six handshake agreement. I'd rather see that in writing.
I'll definitely take that question back to the city planners when we start this conversation. So this was, again, we did kind of do the informal, that's where a lot of this got kicked back, but I'll get that conversation started ASAP. So then the next part of it would be to approve the change order for, basically for engineering services. I talked through this with, with Rob Decker, and he's like, I hate to do this. I said, I understand. I said, this is not your guy's responsibility. You do what we asked you to do. Our understanding was of the site, but there is significant rework to go back, relocate the building. We flipped the building around, so again, ninety percent mechanical, electrical, plumbing, structural, there's just some work to be done there. They're kind of splitting the difference with us already. Rob thought it probably be eight to ten thousand dollars worth, but again, wanting to make sure that we're being good clients here. That's a request of fifty-nine hundred, seemed to be very fair with the amount of rework that we're asking them to do.
And that would be all the underground sewer and electrical service and all that?
That's everything, yeah. So the site plan, the whole site plan review package.
Well, they're doing the site plan, so what they do, does that include like the concrete, that does all the concrete, all that stuff?
So everything, so this is a full, this is just an excerpt from the full civil package that we submitted for site plan review, which was a total of about fifteen pages. So all of that needs to go back through and basically work. There'll be a little bit of rework to figure out, as you know, the grade starts to drop a little bit. Oscar talked about it on the corner of Fourth and Walnut, but then also along Walnut and Fifth, we'll have to figure out the accessibility. I think by pushing it into the corner, we help out with that, so we're not having to worry about ramping as much to get to entrances and things along that line.
All right, tonight moved to approve.
Next second.
Jeff has moved, Santos the second. Any further discussion?
Just one last comment. I don't know who mentioned making sure that we open up that alley wide enough. Can you make sure that that is something that we have these guys review in regards to, you know, what the trailer access is if we're pulling a twenty-five-foot trailer with, you know, twenty-foot truck, whatever it may be, as long as there's still accessibility. If we need to open that up, that may be different in changing where that parking spaces are for accessibility when they pull out.
Yeah, I worry about that search and rescue boat, because you can have people that are trying to get somewhere quick, and they don't need to be having access issues coming in out of a turn like that.
If they can, if they can do that radius, and if it needs to be wider, or if we need to lose two parking spots, we'll maybe move this down further south, then that would be ideal. So make sure that they just look into that in their evaluation.
Yep, so we'll verify the turn radius, and I have a note here essentially to look at the, basically the whole width of the street in play, we need to ask the city to mark off some additional parking spaces there to ensure that we have that clearance. We'll do that.
Yep, that's all. Just, I don't know who makes that from our group here.
So the motion is on the field right now. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
All right, well, thank you very much. We'll get this back. Again, the goal was, we were hope to be up for bid on this here within a week or so. This pushes back a couple of weeks. I hope to get through site plan review this week. That's probably not going to be realistic. What I would say is, we're going to, probably get a site plan review, then next week we'll probably get the public notice posted, so the plans will be here available for the most part. But again, we're getting there, so.
And Mike, remind me again, when, I don't know if we're early, but when do you expect this all to be up and ready?
So the, the goal would be to, we're going to publish this for bidding by mid-August. We're going to give about a month, so by the end of August, or middle of September, we won't have bids back. The goal is to get foundations started, obviously, this fall. I think if we get bids back middle of September, I would think middle of October, or probably as early as, we start to see some work from a general contractor. So this should be open by spring of next year, so I'm guessing probably about a six-month build. Also, within the next week or so, we'll be back working on the addition for the deputy's quarters. So I had good conversations with Captain Slate and Captain Quinn, I don't know his last name, but we will, we'll get those here in front of you guys to look at here shortly. So excited about that project as well.
Good.
Thanks, sir. All right, thank you very much for your time this morning.
Sherry, the other thing I wanted to put on the radar with this whole project and all of this is, do we have a plan for Washington Street too? So I would like to see kind of what we're thinking about doing there, because I'd like to get that junk out of there.
Well, that's a board decision. Well, that's a board decision, so I guess once you guys give me some direction about where you want to go, then we can, you know, this information.
Cause that's floodplain, correct, Eric? So, um, yeah, I, I just, you know, I'm, I'm one of those people that understand that clutter expands to space allotted. And if we leave a couple of buildings in that shack down there, it's just going to get full of junk and we're going to have a problem again. And so I would like to, as a part of this whole project, I want the board to consider that we come up with a long-term plan for that. If, you know, maybe we have a, uh, Mike, I don't know, you're talking to the city planner, maybe we have a little discussion with him, because this is, we're relocating activities from that area. See if the city has any interest in a green space in that area, what that might look like and, you know, because I just don't think that long-term it benefits the bureaucracies that, so to speak, have any activity in that area on Mad Creek, because it's a floodplain. It's just a bad place to have anything.
Now, we'll address that. We had initial conversations with the city about that, and they did express some interest in a couple of possible options for that, so maybe.
Maybe we put it on the agenda and discuss it next week or something.
Yeah.
We'd have a little future value for us, but I wouldn't underestimate the potential value that it could have to the city for material storage, given its location relative to public works, so I would recommend not just giving that away if there's something else stupid.
Or if they can.
Well, I think we, I think we'd have a discussion, and then maybe, Mike, if you can come back in another week or two, with some potential options that they wanted to, to look at with us, and we can put it on the agenda.
So you want it on the agenda for next week?
No, I think maybe two weeks.
Give them a couple of weeks and we'll start talking about options. Cause I think if we do this project, I'd like to have the, I'd like to have a kind of an understanding of everything we're going to do and phase this out and just get it done in one fell swoop.
Could it be a playground?
They'll probably use it for, for storage of, you know, demolition materials, stuff they already got in there to help them widen their area up. But we'll see. I'd like to see if you could have that discussion maybe.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Okay, moving right along to item number seven, discussion of possible action to approve the minutes of the July twenty-second, two thousand nineteen regular meeting.
Move to approve, second.
Santos moved, Jeff is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 It's approved. Item number eight, correspondence. Santos, starting your end.
Uh, not really correspondence, but I'll talk about it here. At the bi-state commission meeting last week, they talked about the census, the twenty-twenty census, everybody knows that's coming, um, hopefully. Uh, anyway, there's going to be a big push on getting rural residents counted. Uh, so I sent a note to the sheriff to let him know there was a, a deal. The census office is having people now, they're starting as early as August, I believe, they're going to be driving around the counties on the rural roads, looking at properties to see what's vacant, what's not, to make sure they have good addresses. So when they go out and count, they're going to try to do it. It's very important for us to make sure we count everybody, because a lot of federal dollars are allocated via those formulas. So I, I encourage that, and also I just don't want people to be nervous when they see strange people driving around the counties, that, uh, this is probably in preparation for the twenty-twenty census. And there's also jobs available, so I don't know the website, but you can figure, you'd probably Google it and find it, and, uh, so if somebody wants to be a census worker, they're starting to take those, add those positions. That's all the correspondence I.
All right, thank you. I didn't know that many.
I don't know if it's correspondence, but went to them Saturday and looked at some mud dragsters. They're going to be talking to the Fairwood about going to Morris in Illinois, whatever they begin to look at the show. They're going to perform out there as possible act for replacement of our figuring races to get.
Mud boggers?
Well, it's the mud boggers, but these are mud dragsters. They don't want mud, because they can't control them, because we talked to twelve or fifteen hundred horse show trucks. That do time trials in three hundred foot of space to see at the fastest time.
Uh, how about committees, Doug? Uh, I did not. Jeff?
We did the bi-state commission on the twenty-fourth. That was it.
I didn't have any.
Change the page here. Uh, item number ten, receive information from county employees. Anybody with Keith?
Morning, I, a couple of things. I wanted to give you a quick update on where we're at on our FEMA process. And this is their diagram, so I don't have any control for it. But if you start at the left, disaster declared, attend applicant briefing, which Nathan was actually at that meeting, as well as a number of us, submit the request for public assistance, which I did, I think, almost a month ago now. Uh, have an exploratory call with FEMA, we've done that, and have a recovery scoping meeting with FEMA and recipient. That is Thursday the first at nine AM at our place. No need, you're all welcome, but no need for them to be there. Eric will be there, uh, and Kurt will, Kurt Weiss Conservation will probably be there, because down below the categories of work, uh, and again, I'm just giving you that in case we start spouting, we're doing cat A, cat B, cat G, whatever. Like category G, that's where Kurt, Kurt Weiss's and Conservation's work. Cat C, roads and bridges, that's where the road departments falls. And cat B, I think, uh, I think we've got clear, but the demolition part, Eric's work, or the work that he's going to be involved with will follow, roll up under that. Debris removal, I don't think we really, unless Kurt has some, I don't think we really had much in that area this time. And, uh, I, I know Eric also going to have to deal with the state on buyouts, I guess that's what the feds told us so far. We'll probably learn more on Thursday. Any questions on any of this? It's just really a quick background of where we're at, kind of a cheat sheet of where we're at. Other than that, construction, I just wanted to give an update. Um, Illawha has mostly completed the Wildcat Den paving. They're down on G twenty-eight this morning. Peterson is continuing to work on the structure elimination, road relocation on Iron City and Hundred Thirty-Fifth. G twenty-eight, and I, Jeff had asked me a, a question which I had not answered, and I don't yet have the answer. We have a meeting Wednesday evening with the homeowners association out of Hickory Hills, and they, I'm sure you can find the providers, but they have a long list of questions. So we'll find out really where they're headed with their water main relocation. And Bridgestone Bandag has still not responded to any inquiries regarding their water line. And we have not found out definitively from, um, power and water, if that line is a dead animal or, or not. That goes to the old Bandag building there on G twenty-eight. We don't foresee them selling that property in the imaginable future, so we're not too sure why they would really need a water service there, but we still don't have answers on that. They did write a plan sheet for Doug, the intersection of one hundred and twelve and North Island, which, and again, they're, they're far from done with work up there. Questions, concerns?
Someone else?
Kind of follow up a little bit, just clarify. We've, our staff's been out kind of doing some initial assessments of some flood damage properties. We've placarded fourteen structures to date. Now we're in the process of ascertaining which ones have had proper elevation certificates prior to this flood event. The demolition project that Keith spoke about will generally cover structures that were heavily damaged and are possibly unsafe for human occupancy at this point. You'll recall in two thousand eight, we had a lot of those. We have to make those determinations, whether they're unsafe and become a public hazard or, you know, a safety issue, then that's how they get onto that demolition list. I'm only aware of about two that we can definitively say are potentially structurally unsafe at this point, so I'm not quite sure how big this demolition project's going to be. Fourteen had floodwater in them to some extent, but I can't ascertain for sure that they are unsafe at this point. We're placarding them, asking homeowners, um, structure owners to contact us. I, I, that's another reason I wanted to mention it. I would like to implore to the public, if you've had flood damage, contact my office. We need to get an accurate assessment of the level of damage to have these figures and estimates for FEMA. The demolition project does not involve buyout. Keith talked about that. A lot of the Highway twenty-two, East Mississippi River, um, flood damage structures are buildings on leased land. Those are not properties that even if they're demolished, we would be buying out. Those, that, a lot of that land belongs to the Corps of Engineers. If it's a permanent residence that the, the homeowner owns the actual ground, um, and it's heavily damaged, those are your buyout projects. Those would be a hazard mitigation grant project. We have to start, like Keith said, through, through the state. I don't see very many of those potentially, but we're still in some initial assessment phases right now. So the demolition project would just be for dangerous structures that were heavily, heavily damaged, and right now we only know of a couple that we could make that claim at this point, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Item number eleven is items of the administration office. Nancy?
Um, the first thing I have is, is a hiring request from the county attorney's office. That hiring form was in your packet. He is requesting to hire one step above what's the minimum for the assistant county attorney's scale. Um, and that is based on the candidate having previous experience as a law clerk, and I think this request is reasonable.
Okay, I'd move as approval.
Okay, Jeff has moved, and I'm not sure which of you guys seconded it first, so I'll let Nancy decide. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, the, the, the next three items, those are all transfer resolutions that Sherry talked to you about last week, about that money that we had left over in the, in our funds at the close of the fiscal year.
Okay, do we want to take those as one motion or do we want them individual?
We do them individually, please.
Yeah, I'll move that we approve resolution oh seven twenty-nine nineteen oh one.
My second.
It's been moved by Jeff and seconded by Santos. This is a roll, roll call vote. Santos?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Item C, do we have a motion?
I'll move that we approve resolution oh seven twenty-nine nineteen oh two.
My second.
Jeff has moved, Santos is second, and this is a roll call vote. Doug?
Aye.
I vote aye, Jeff?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
It's approved. And D?
I'll move to approve seven dash twenty-nine dash nineteen dash oh three.
Okay, Santos has moved. Doug is seconded. Uh, this is a roll call vote. Santos?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
I vote aye, Doug?
Aye.
It's approved. Final, well, not necessarily final, but the next thing is to accept July twenty-nineteen payroll claims?
I'll move to approve, second.
Jeff has moved, Santos is seconded. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything else? Nancy?
Um, I don't have anything else.
Okay, anybody else have anything? All right, folks, we adjourn. Thank you.